There you are. Hi, Ellen.
Okay.
We got called to order. Called to order, yeah.
Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Campbell.
Present.
Barrett.
Present.
Turned again.
Present.
Poe.
Here.
Bell. Here, long break.
Here.
Thank you.
Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Recess to executive session.
Okay, and it's items A, conference with real property negotiator. The property is 1111 Bailey Avenue, APN 0185221130000. And then item B, conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation. And item C, conference with real property negotiator regarding 50.66 acre vacant parcel generally located in Ice Plant Road and the APN numbers listed in the agenda.
Nini will come to order at the Needle City Council.
I went through Golden Valley, came down.
Thank you. Executive session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the report out from closed session is as follows. Item A was conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The agency negotiator was city manager Rick Daniels. The negotiating parties are the city of Needles as a potential seller and San Bernardino County as a potential buyer of a portion of the building located at 1111 Bailey Avenue. This building under negotiation were priced in terms. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. Item B, conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4. There was no reportable action taken on that item. Item C, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Agency negotiator, city manager Rick Daniels. The negotiating parties were the city of Needles as a seller and David Longnecker as a potential buyer of a portion of the property described as 50.66 acre vacant parcel generally located in Ice Plant Road. APN is listed in the agenda. Under negotiation were priced in terms. There was no reportable action taken. Then that concludes the report out from closed session.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Convocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. My nation and her God, universal with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Thank you.
Amen.
Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve.
Good.
Offer the vote?
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Reportable.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Poe. Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Conflict of interest? Do we have any conflict?
So.
Not be notified of any.
Any correspondence?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Introductions, I see that we have in the audience. We have Terry Campbell, current utility commissioner. Thank you. Rainey, thank you. Oh, and our new treasurer, Virginia Tasker, yay. You're welcome. Thank you. And.
And the star of the show.
Yes.
Is leaving.
And city attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by this council. The mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. And just as a reminder, we can't discuss things that are not on the agenda, and there's a three-minute time limit for public comment.
Thank you. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code section 54950 prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Mr. James?
Good evening. They may, Madam Mayor, they may want to turn up your, your mic a little bit. You're very difficult to hear in the back. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, I've been, I've been spending a lot of time concentrating on Santa Fe Park and the El Garza's. I'm working at persuading you folks to make some changes to the use and the custodianship of it. First of all, I'd like to again ask or request that you folks consider forming a commission like there are for the park and recs and there are for the cemetery and the various other agencies to oversee and manage that facility. And in that in mind, spending a lot of time, I walked around the facility and I was quite shocked, the state of the outside. The fountain, which was once a beautiful fountain, now looks like it belongs in the middle of the desert where no one is occupying the space. There is debris that is blown in from the wind that's, that's coveted up in the various outcoves that allows it to, the wind to chase it in there. And it, for the, for the sake of attracting tourism, it just doesn't seem like it's a place that I would want to stop and see if I was a tourist. And given that, there's no, nothing telling the tourists what this place is. This is the crown jewel of the desert, and nothing's there to tell them that. I would like to put before you tonight that maybe there should be a walking tour installed, and that tour could be put in the windows of that beautiful building with exhibits explaining what that building is, and as you walk from window to window, it tells you what has went on in that building, and it takes you through history. And it brings you around to the point of that beautiful fountain and it in full, full capacity and grandeur. And to really draw people into and give them something to see when they get off that freeway, if we can get them off that freeway, and to use that park. That being said, also, Santa, Santa Fe Park has a beautiful war memorial in the middle of it. And there's this little brass plaque that really doesn't tell you a lot about it. How about, how about some signage there that tells you what that is about and why we should be looking at and why we should be reading it? This park is underused, this park is under maintained, and this park is, as I'm beginning to feel and beginning to think of it as a citadel or a crypt for the dead, because there's no life there. There's only memories, and most people don't know what those memories are. So I challenge you folks tonight, and I'm, I'm going to challenge, challenge the park and recs department to make movement on this building, to make it something that is worthy of people stopping and seeing and putting in proper perspective the management of it, not a pseudo-management, but a real management of this building. Thank you. Have a wonderful night now.
I have that better.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Jones. I live at 837 Beach Drive in Needles, California. I'm currently the volunteer and president of the Needles Museum, which is 929 Front Street, which our picture window looks out to view the El Garsas, which was built in 1908. Currently, we offer tours of El Garsas. We recently, Friday, I think we had a busload. I think it was 39 people came to our museum, and then we took them to the El Garsas. We also have a great view of the Santa Fe Park, which houses the 1918 World War I cannon, which was put there in 1935. We also have an exhibit in the museum with details of that cannon. The museum is in the 1948 J.C. Penny Building on Route 66, and all of those are on Route 66, which we have a lot of people visit every day because of that fact. I actually want to commend the city and the mayor for their care of the El Garsas. Mayor Jan has volunteered for years in coordinating events in the El Garsas. I often see her, in fact, yesterday, or was it today, I saw her with a wagon early on going over there to set up for an event. Good volunteers are hard to come by, and the city hit a jackpot with Mayor Jan. I was recently quite disappointed on the social media. A couple individuals were trying to start an attack and a smear campaign against the mayor because she did not think it was wise to open up the El Garsas bathrooms for the Run for the Wall event. Both her mom and her dad are veterans, so she was not standing against the veterans or the riders, but she was standing for the welfare of the building, which is one of Needles' last historic buildings from that era. I need to stop. The museum has had to close our public restrooms. We tried to open them for a few years for the Run for the Wall, but our, our plumbing was too, too old to stand up for such a use for so many people, and it costs us hundreds of dollars to get it fixed after they left. We came to the same conclusion as the mayor that our building could not take the wear and tear of the use. The city has many great projects coming for the future. I was proud to, with Zach and the city recently with the completion of the skate park. I believe a campaign to open or build bathrooms in the city Santa Fe Park is not one of them. In my opinion, it would be money wasted and would not impact bringing any new visitors into the town. The new visitor center located in the El Garsas, which is subsidized by the city, has new plumbing, a new bathroom, and regular business hours. The fact that this should, that fact should eliminate any future debate regarding building or opening the El Garsas bathroom. It doesn't seem like the city takes advantage of the history that the museum has, which is right across the street. We have great pictures of the Harvey House. We have a lot of history that people need to come and view.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. I'm Catherine Travis. I live at 681 Channel Way in Needles. I have two little short items. One is River Road Traffic Engineering and Circulation. The Planning Commission has approved two developments along River Road leading to Jack Smith Park and the public launch ramps. It's common knowledge that the road surface is deteriorating, that it's too narrow for the types of traffic it regularly has on it, that circulation for pull-offs, ingress, egress is poor, and that the speeds of vehicles traveling it are significantly above posted speeds on a consistent basis with lackluster enforcement. Before allowing the full approval of the two reference developments, I'm asking that the council require an engineering report covering at least the engineering standards of the existing road, the load specifications, traffic, traffic volume, et cetera, that it was designed for, a study of the traffic, load, speeds, ingress, egress, circulation, and safety conditions currently, and a comparison of the two, an analysis of what the additional impacts will be from the two newly approved developments on the existing road, and a projection of what will be needed to assure full and correct engineering for the additional loads and traffic if required, and any costs associated with any road construction necessary, and that this report be presented at an open council or commission meeting for public discussion. I believe the developers should pay for the engineering report since the impacts of their developments would be the precipitating cause of the need for a road upgrade. Additionally, I urge you to require that said developers participate in any construction cost necessary as a requirement of their development permissions by the city. Thank you on that one. Number two, the Planning Commission public hearing of April 19th, 2023. It was stated at the meeting that all residents within 300 feet of the development were noticed about the meeting. However, I never did receive a notice, and the development is directly across River Road from my home at 681 Channel Way. I know too that at least one of my adjacent neighbors did not receive notice. So to my mind, the meeting was not properly noticed, and the resolution resulting from the hearing should be abandoned and the meeting rescheduled once all residents are properly noticed. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sangita Championary, and I'm, my address is 3962 Mohado Court, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm here today to voice our concern and dismay at what the city has done to the River Valley in, on 1707 Needles Highway. My husband, Promod Championary, is seated here. And I, Sangita, purchased the property in May of 2018. My husband upgraded the property, new furniture, fixtures, appliances, televisions, microwaves, et cetera. He would work from morning to night, putting in long hours on getting the property upgraded, even though he suffered a bad stroke seven years ago. He even drove a large U-Haul full of furniture from Las Vegas back and forth. He ran the motel from May 2018 to October 2021, paid all his taxes to the city, including room tax and property taxes to the county, always on time and diligently. He had a good standing with the city. San Bernardino County would send through their social worker, Brooke, countless customers in dire need of shelter, disabled, displaced people that needed help. Also, there were countless times when even the police would bring people who needed a place to stay. The local Indian tribes would also bring by people who needed a place to stay. Having been in the business for well over 25 years, Promod is known to be extremely hardworking. This motel was his proud pride and joy. In 2021, he decided to sell to Raji Kolachna from Woodland Hills, California, who purchased it with no idea of how to run a motel. She ran it down to the ground, not paying any of her bills, taxes, not even paying her employees. She stopped making payments to us too, going into default. The state of the motel was so bad that the city closed the property in April 2022. We hired a lawyer to foreclose, but she kept stalling us, trying to claim bankruptcy. We have been fighting this past year to take back the property. We have continuously pleaded with the city of Needles to let us come in and fix all the inadequacies that they are claiming that are there. Instead of saving the city thousand, claiming, instead of saving the city thousands of dollars in lawyer fees and receivership fees, they would, they would not give us a chance. They were not even willing to talk to us or even let us see what needed doing. We pleaded with them to let us take it back from her, to rebuild and, and renovate and get back to code, but they wouldn't listen, or rather pretended to listen, but already had set the receivership in place, which is in their power to repeal. As a last-ditch effort, we have decided to let our voices be heard in today's forum. They have proceeded with the receivership against our wishes, which means all the effort and hard work my husband put in has all gone to waste. This was supposed to be our retirement investment, and the city has unfairly taken it away from us. They have the power to stop this receivership, and we have decided if they don't, then we will have no choice but to file a lawsuit against the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Hamilton, and I live at 691 Beach Drive, Needles, California. And we had a planning and zoning meeting last Wednesday, and I got the notice. I was one of the few that got a notice. But it never said near that they were going to take a vote on that night. All it says is they're going to talk about it. And actually, they were going to give it up. Right at the end, they were going to wait 30 days until if the city found out whether or not it was a dike road, a legitimate dike road, or maybe they could take it down three or four feet and make it wider. Because I have an issue with the road. It's too narrow. It's, they needed to put a turning lane in there. We came up with a whole bunch of issues about it, but they nixed all of them and passed it on a five to one vote or whatever it is. And I think you, I think they just ran that through a little too fast. And I got another issue with not having a stop sign on the wooden bridge that crosses a dike or the pond there. Wooden bridge, it goes right across up to the dike. There's no stop sign. And I'm sure there was one there a couple months ago, but for the last two months, there hasn't been a stop sign. And it's not a very safe deal there. Not to have a stop sign there. And the other day, two cement trucks drove over that bridge. We have a sign up there that says 20 ton maximum or whatever. A dump truck, I asked Siri about how heavy a dump truck was, and she told me 35 tons. So they are over double what that bridge is supposed to be holding. Who's ever ordering that cement, they should notify him that they can go the other way around. You don't have to go over the wooden bridge with those, that big truck. Other than that, thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe you need to put a sign there.
Hello. Jeffrey West, 429 North Bay Street. The River Lux Resort has done the traffic study. It was approved by the city. 600-page sequa was in the newspaper. We followed all the protocols and for approval. It's been engineered, engineered studies have been done for the traffic. So it's been approved, and there was a less than significant impact is what it's called. So that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Are there any more public comments? If not, public comments are closed. A ten-minute limit per presentation has been established per municipal code section 2-18. Staff presentation on the Biden Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement sees regarding the Colorado River Basin and the recommend to the name, to the mayor to execute a priority of rights recommendation letter regarding present perfected rights.
Madam Mayor, as training's getting ready to do the presentation, water rights that need, the city of Needles and the Needles Public Utility Authority own reach back to 1885. They are historic. They are, were challenged and upheld by the United States Supreme Court in 1968. Or 1962, pardon. So. At no time in our history have the water rights of Needles and California communities been at more at risk than they are right now. That is, because of the drought, the Bureau of Reclamation and the federal administration has released a study that would grant them the authority to need align all of those water or allocation of the river. They laid out three options. One, do nothing. And that is wait for Mother Nature to adjust, and she did this year. We have what some claim are the highest snowfall since 1952. But so it might, we might work our way out of it, but we might not, and it could easily go 50% chance either way. The second option is to everybody take proportionate cuts. So if the river has, if the users of the river have to take overall a 20% cut, then everybody takes a 20% cut. And we don't like that because it disregards our water rights. So the third option is that any cutbacks would be based on the water rights that were established by law that's been in place for a century and a half. That, for example, Needles are tier-one water rights, which means they're amongst the oldest. And then you go down, at the bottom of the list is the state of Arizona, which have the most junior water rights, which means they never claimed to maintain long after everybody else did. Now, they didn't care for that. They soon ended up in Supreme Court. Supreme Court of the United States upheld the water rights as the way to allocate the river. The federal government is looking at options which would change them. So Rainey is going to give you the primer on the Colorado River that I promised a long time ago. But I know some of you have been on the tour recently of the Colorado River, and that would, this was a hot topic then. So you're, you're a little bit ahead. But what I, what I want Rainey to do is walk through, a punchline is that the city is under utilizing its current allocation of the river. And we're doing that through wise use of water and conservation. And, but we're doing that voluntarily. This would be a permanent mandated, heavy-handed federal action to take the water rights of the city. That's one of the three options. At the end of the day, we want, I'm asking the council to send a letter to the Bureau of Reclamation to favor the retention of the water right system, which retains the city's waters. Rainey?
That was a great start. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Like Mr. Daniel said, I'm going to give a very brief overview on the Colorado River, how the entitlements are distributed, what the Biden administration recently announced, steps we're asking you to take tonight, and what the future of water in California is kind of going to look like. Right in front of you, you have the lower basin states and the allocation amongst the seven states in the lower basin. California does receive a majority of the allocation of 4.4 million acre feet per year. The city, as Mr. Daniel said, has two present and perfected rights that were either grandfathered in from 1985, which allows the city to divert 1,500 acre feet of water per year. The city, the city also has in 1995 purchased water entitlements from Burlington Northern Santa Fe, from the old stim engine days down off of Topoc, which gives the city another 1,200 acre foot of diversion. The city has the highest priority rights in the state of California titled perfected rights, which is based, it's basically what we call first in time, first in right, right? So California was the first settlers. They were first at the table. They got most of the allocation of the Colorado River. The city also has, and I think it's very important to note, that there are nine other present and perfected right holders in the city of Needles that are along Needles Highway, because they have wells and they're on their own. They have present rights that date back to as early as 1893, from when they were growing cantaloupes and melons out there along Needles Highway. So there's a lot of individuals that have their own PPRs, the same as the highest priority as Needles do, but that are located within the city. I'm going to go on here. This is the current, as we have of October 16th, the Colorado River Basin storage. And I don't want to throw out some alarming numbers, but those are the percentage of full in both of the lake reservoirs. There's only a total system capacity of 33% as of October. This is over the last 20 years of the drought, the historical inflows into Lake Powell and Lake Mead Storage. You'll see 2022, it drops dramatically, and it's, it's fluctuated. I know you will bring up that we did see some heavy rains in California this year, and we do have a heavy snowpack, which is going to help. But however, one year of good weather is not going to fix this historical low flow, if you will, into our reservoirs. I wanted to give a little, little timeline, a little update of what the city has done as good partners. So we've participated in 2007 when the interim guidelines were adopted and regulated between and negotiated between California, Arizona, Nevada. We also participated in 2019 when we signed the upper or the lower Colorado drought contingency plan. Myself and Mr. Daniels actually had the honor to sit with the other states in Lake, in Las Vegas to actually sign the drought contingency plan because it showed unity amongst the lower basins as a commitment to help preserve the Colorado River and do our part to reduce our, what we're diverting. This chart has a lot of numbers, but I kind of just want you to focus on the gray column. Uh, this chart has a lot of numbers, but I kind of just want you to focus on the gray column. Um, and also um the combined values, if you will, that last like four columns. This graph in a nutshell combines what through the three agreements that we talked about, the interim guidelines, uh minute twenty three, which is also negotiated, and the drought contingency plan, what each state was willing to reduce. And you will see that um as we get to, and I'll explain a little bit, um to the left of Lake Mead elevation, those are the the elevations in the me in the lake. And when you hit those ranges to the right is the reductions, each state with their their um take, excuse me, you will see that the first several um levels of elevation of the water, California does have a zero allocation of reduction. That is because Arizona was last in time, and so they took the first hit. But as you can see, as we get to tier two B and three, California will see a reduction of their allocation, uh most of which will happen down in um Imperial Irrigation District and Metropolitan Water District. This is kind of um a snapshot that makes a little bit clearer than that last one that shows, okay, tier zero, what we'd hit, tier three, what each of the states would would necessarily uh reduce. So I thought that was a little bit better to show you. Um, as Mr. Daniels announced last week, the Biden administration um released a pro- a proposal through the Department of Justice to address the past twenty years of drought, um which was the largest in recorded history, to help um unprecedented water shortages in the Colorado River. Um, and they were released what we are calling the supplemental environmental impact statement, um which is an interim operating guidelines that would help um the dams Glen Glen Hoover Hoover Dam, Parker Davis Dam uh to regulate the flow of the water. The draft um um SEIS is what we're calling it. I call it some other words, but that's probably not appropriate today. Um um where the intent was to provide system integrity, public health and safety from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six. So it's a very short timeline that they're looking to address. Um, as Mr. Daniel said, in front of you are the three actions, excuse me, that he is giving up until May thirtieth for public comment to the Department of um Interior. As Mr. Daniel stated, the first action is the first is to do nothing, let the states leave as I showed you on the previous. We'll go here at the previous tier based on the elevations in the mead, the shortages that were already negotiated through several drought contingency plans and negotiations. Um, the other one is to leave it as the priority of rights and understanding California has present perfected rights, honor those obligations that were set by the U S Department of Security. Um, they're anticipating that they will have a decision by summer of twenty twenty three that will be announced. And then the last one, which is completely unfavorable, is equal cuts across all of the lower basin states. So we no longer take into account what was negotiated, that's out the window. So all that work that all the agencies that came together, it's done. It's all equal cuts amongst everybody. Um, I do want to close with just a few comments that the city has been good partners and has done what we can. Um, we have implemented um a turf removal project for our residents, our businesses. We've done a toilet replacement project. We've cut turf in our own golf course. Um, we reduce what we have on our parks and we have um to to show our good faith. Um, I will say that in twenty twenty two, the city underutilized its allocation by five hundred acre feet a year. The city is not allowed to store that. And the other jurisdictions that they lead water in per their allocation in the lakes, they can bank it. Unfortunately, with having a present perfected right, we are not able to do that. So it just shows our reduction and we're not using our full allocation and our commitment. So with that being said, as Mr. Daniel stated, enclosed is a letter of recognition that we would like uh the mayor to endorse, which recommends that Biden administration follow the present perfected rights that was adopted um and set forth by our um ancestors. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Um, Rainey. Rick, um us not using our allocation is, has that maybe hurt us in some way? Like as far as maintaining, keeping it, or having a fight or an argument in this?
We we don't, Madam Mayor, uh council board, uh we don't believe so. I think there's a stronger argument to be made that we're showing our ability and commitment to conserve. And uh I legally, it doesn't change anything. Uh, but I think it's uh the message that the other states should take, and that is do your best because we are all in this together. And and these are our neighbors. So we want to do everything we can. I don't believe that hurts us. Now keep this in mind. Half of the power that the city of needles uses, uh electricity comes from hydropower. So if that the level of Lake Mead drops much further, they will not be able to generate hydropower. And that is ten percent of the cost of other power that we have. So we don't believe it is uh going to harm us. I think it makes a statement about the kind of people we are to conserve the resources that are available. And I didn't conserve that water, but this community did. And much credit goes to everybody.
Does our power come from Lake Mead or does it come from uh Davis Dam and Parker Dam?
Only Parker.
Only Parker.
Parker Davis Dam, we get hydro adoption. Yeah.
And also we give out, we have conservation since we give out showerheads. The people that want to come get your showerhead replaced for water conservation, the city gives away showerheads also, which it's really remarkable, the things that we do for water conservation here. And the fact that our city, in the hottest city of the country, that we are able to come from twenty five hundred acre feet a lot down from two thousand is speaks to our entire community. It's really marvelous. Terry, everyone.
Terry Campbell, forty four sixty nine Bourbon Street. Currently Chair of the Board of Public Utilities. Perfected water rights. Not only the city's water, the city of needles, the twelve hundred and twenty seven acre feet. There's uh six hundred and eighty acre feet of perfected water rights throughout the city limits besides the cities. There's only two other areas that have negotiated a allocation agreement for those water rights. Androtti was the first one. They did it back in the eighties. That's near the river road cutoff, the Wetmore. Father down there towards the river, there's a section Androtti, and I think it carries over a little bit into the Palms Resort. The other one is Stephenson. That's where I live. And I negotiated that allocation agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation, took me three and a half years. Twenty eight landowners. And one of them was SoCal Gas, who I thought would never sign because the attorneys in Texas. They were the first ones to sign the allocation agreement. These need to be protected on you guys, as the MPU A represent the rate holders who will have to pay up to six hundred dollars an acre foot for water to replace whatever cuts. Or I thought it was item two that was a cut straight across the board. But you also, as councilors, represent us out there that have perfected water rights. And so it's imperative that we comment during this comment period. And let them know that the Supreme Court ruling and and it was revised in two thousand, it was in sixty four that they ruled against Arizona. But they uh, but they did, Arizona did win some water, but the uh it was reiterated in two thousand and six, the drought contingency plan was in two thousand and seven. I remember I was on utility board back then and when Bob Hargreaves made that presentation saying, oh, we've got to get the mayor up to Vegas. He's got to sign this agreement on this drought contingency plan. And I raised my hand and says, so what does needles get out of this? But why would we send the mayor up there if we ain't getting something out of this? What we got was higher allocation on our uh, what's that called? Uh, when you offset your uh wastewater treatment plan in the perk ponds? We got a higher allocation on return. It's called returns. They let the re, yeah, they calculate in how much you use and then how much you return to the aquifer. And uh, but the us out there on septic tanks, they won't let us calculate our returns. But it's imperative that you guys act on this. And the 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 advice I got from the Bureau of Reclamation, who she wasn't, I'm going to leave her name, but I think maybe you guys got forwarded document I sent from her. They recommend against the straight across crosscuts because that affects it perfected water rights. The other two options, maintain the perfected water rights. And uh the uh well, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does this go before the House and the Senate, or is this just an executive decision, or how is this being voted in?
It's Madam Mayor, I'm about uh counsel, excuse me. Um, this is an executive order. So this is uh the administration, single handedly.
Making, will decide this decision themselves?
Well, they have the authority to make this decision. But candidly, if it goes, there are so many parties that will be aggrieved that we're probably looking at decades of litigation.
Litigation, yes, that's what I was going to say, even if they approve and we fight against it because it was a Supreme Court ruling, it's going to be.
Well, we think the Supreme Court nineteen sixty four was brilliant. And we relied upon that decision. Thank you.
That that memo that I sent that I got from the Bureau of Reclamation went out to all the large water users. They didn't send that memo out to the small water users or to the city of needles because they thought the city of needles was too small a user. But that notification in it, if you read it, has a bunch of dates in May where you can join webinars to comment and an address in Utah where you can write a letter if you want to. So the city can write a letter, but y'all can write letters too. So that the city has that. I forwarded that from uh the Bureau of Reclamation. But when I ask, I go, well, how come we didn't get this in the mail? We are too small a water user.
Thank you.
So Madam Mayor, the the draft letter for your consideration authorization is in your packet. It's about three or four pages back. And it does reference the of present perfected water rights, that those that are privately owned. That that Jeremy Campbell.
Call for the motion.
I'll make a motion that um reauthorize the mayor to submit a letter of commitment and take all in other available means to protect the city of needles water rights.
I'll second it.
Perse- perfected rights.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Reassess the city council meeting and convene a joint council MPU A meeting. Call to order, roll call previously taken. Public comments pertaining to the NPUA council items, a three minute time limit period per person has been established. Any NPUA council consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the NPUA city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Recommended action, approve two items two through three on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
I'd like to pull number three, just with a quick question.
Okay. Um, did you want staff comment on that, or should we just go ahead and vote for two then?
You can, you can have.
I can ask, okay.
Okay.
So so the the request is for sixty five thousand roughly to be funded um to purchase and replace the plumbing. Is this included in or addition in addition to the hundred and forty K that we approved two weeks uh on the eleventh?
This is for new member, we had well fifteen that
Right.
that uh went down.
Right.
And we were solely relying on well fifteen. Well, we did the same rehabilitation of the well and pump on well eleven, therefore we were able to shift to that. So this is uh above.
Yeah, I can, I can get it's above. Uh, what you approved last time was videoing and rehabilitating the well. Until we were able to conduct the videoing, we were not sure the condition of the well. So now we're approving the equipment that's needed. I think um Mr. Daniels might have shared some pictures. Okay, so the rehabilitation is a different, different than purchasing and replacing the equipment. Correct. Okay, correct.
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman, because we didn't know what we were going to find. What we found is we need new pump, we need new casing uh through which that water comes in. So it is above.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, call for the motion for um line items two and three.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All in favor, call for the vote. Sorry.
Yes.
I had it myself there.
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Turn again?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Reassess the joint NPUA city council meeting and convene a joint council housing authority board of commissioners meeting, HACN. Corolla, public comments pertaining to the HACN council items, a three minute time limit per person has been established. HACN Board of Commissioners and Council Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and maybe and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the council, HACN Board of Commissioners, may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Recommended action, approve approve items four through six on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
I move to approve.
I'll second. Call for the vote.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Turn again?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
Adhere in the joint council, HACN Board of Commissioners meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Public comments pertaining to the council items, a three minute time limit per person has been established. Consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items seven through seventeen on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
I'd like to pull fifteen. For a question.
I'll move to approve items seven through seventeen without fifteen.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
House Member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, on item number fifteen, given that uh that relates to raising the budget for code enforcement matters and our firm is the one that's going to be doing the code enforcement, I'm going to recuse myself on this item.
Okay.
Members of the council, uh this year we've had two very big code enforcement issues, both of them uh with uh terrible living conditions in two both towns. Again, I refer you back to one of the environmental health officers that said in her twenty years, she had never seen living conditions like that. But that has caused us to do um a lot of litigation as it relates to enforcing the code. And in both cases, the city has been successful in its litigation. The uh to the point now that on the best motel, um they are in the process of selling that property for demolition. Uh, but there are outstanding fines. But there are outstanding fines and costs the city has. With the River Valley Inn, we have been successful in the face of all kinds of suits and counter suits by current owners, previous owners. But the court has upheld the city's enforcement of those regulations and health and safety. That has caused our costs in the legal side of code enforcement to go up, what we must will be expected to spend rest this year, up approximately seventy thousand dollars. What I need is an authorization from the council, and then we will look to recoup those costs in any settlement that we reach with the owners and previous owners. So but in order for Patrick to be able to sign off on an invoice to pay the legal bill, I need your the budget has to have that money in it. And right now we're we've redlined that account. So we will look to recoup these costs. And then that money would go back into the general fund reserve.
Yeah, the question the question was answered that I had, that it possibly will be recouped. And if if the property sells, we will get our percentage back on that, correct?
That's correct. We will take whatever measures are necessary, liens and other claims.
That was my only concern.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other commission? Call for the vote.
I move to approve.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
End of consent. Public public comments pertaining to the council items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. Applicant Mike West has requested an amendment to resolution number twenty twenty-one dash forty-seven, removing condition number sixteen, which restricts a water feature during the drought to be located at four twenty-nine North K Street.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the city had in front of it a request for a an electronic billboard.
The applicant's here. Okay, okay.
Then for an electronic billboard. And that electronic billboard, as he proposed, included a fountain. The council, when it gave its final approval, said basically that you can build a fountain, but you can't use it left for during as long as the drought continues. Really, when you look at the amount of water, it's not as significant of a num of a number, even and I'm saying this while I'm just I'm just understanding all the dangers.
And it's not over.
And Rainey has pointed out that the drought's not over. But in the whole scheme of things, this is a pretty large amount of water. And the applicant has proposed that it be recirculating water, so actual consumption other than evaporation.
Minimum.
No. So the condition is in all reality, probably not essential.
Thank you. Mike.
Yeah, so I I just printed out the actual water feature. It's on page two. It's about three inches tall, thirty-six inches wide, and it has one inch and a half PVC pipe that hooks up to it, and it will be recirculating. So the evaporation rate is about a toilet bowl flush a day, seven gallons of water. It's not gonna be twenty-four hours a day ran, so it'll actually be a little less, but I'm just calling it a toilet bowl flush a day. So I just hired a Yesco billboard builders, just signed a check with them. They're gonna be submitting to the city with my plans with the engineering. So what happens is you have a billboard with a pole, so it has a footing, concrete footing. The actual reservoir, we're calling it, it's one foot thick of water that will be pouring into it, will be a separate footing. It's it's gunite. It's like a swimming pool made out of, so there's really no, it's very lightweight. So there'll be one permit for the billboard, and then there'll be one permit for the actual eight-foot by ten-foot swimming pool, I guess you call it, little pond. Yeah, well, fountain, I guess you can call it a fountain. So with a couple bubblers that'll hook up to the pump. So I'm just looking for approval to go ahead and hook that up and get it operating. If the water, I have to bring in the water line with the Riverlucks, a ten-inch water line. It's about a quarter million dollars. I'm working on the engineering on that with my final map that should be submitted to you and to the planning within the next three weeks. So I would like to operate the sign with water, not necessarily hooked up to the city right now because it's gonna cost me quarter million bucks to bring it in. But I could do a storage tank, or I could fill it up once a week with whatever I need to get the water.
Let's just buy the council.
Just.
I have a comment. Since this came in front of us last time, it's really been on my mind a lot. I've noticed that City of Bullhead has on their at their city hall two water features, so I'm like, it's the desert. But I've been thinking about it. I'm like, this is gonna be great. It's gonna look great. People are gonna see it. It's gonna really pass up that corner. I just it's gonna be awesome. So I'm looking forward to this.
Yeah, and this is a business, you know, this is gonna generate revenue. It's gonna help push sales for the the homes I'm building, which I have seven people already interested. I just got my pink slips from the DRE, Department of Real Estate, so we're moving forward quickly behind the scenes, so it's gonna happen here very quickly, so I hope that.
So so just based on this picture, the water as it's recycled, it actually waters the foliage?
Oh, no, 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 it just recycles.
It's recycled.
Oh, okay.
That's just a picture of of the device that spills the water out.
Okay.
On the second page.
If you tell me if it waters the plants.
The second page. It's it's very small. It's three inches by thirty-six inches. But I have to have that put in in the by the sign builder. That way I don't have to rip the sign out, and then I'm gonna do the fountain.
I have a question for you, too. Being that there's a drought, you've agreed not to let not to run it ahead of time, correct, unless the city approves it?
Yeah, I'm looking for the approval for that now because it's a toilet bowl flush a day, and it's an actual business that should be able to use water as a as a business.
Right, and only and only would be one one flush of a toilet a day.
Uh, flush, flush and a half. Now, when it's too windy, we're gonna shut it down, you know, because it gets windy up here. We all know that.
Right.
Um, when it's raining, no reason to have it on. So it'll be, you know, I'll put a little rain out in Southern California. We have little things that rain sensors, shut your sprinklers off. I'll do stuff like that. You know, I don't want to waste water. You know, I'm not, I'm just trying to make people look and go, wow, I want to buy a house there. I want to go to Needles. That's all I'm trying to do.
You have a couple of questions. How how big is this? The whole water feature gonna be? It's not gonna be only thirty-six inches, obviously, right? Is that?
That's what the water's gonna come out, thirty-six inches, and it's gonna go into my little building water fountain that's eight foot by twelve foot, eight foot by fourteen foot, I think. But it's only eight inches deep of water, and then it has a couple bubblers that spray up with some lights. So it's gonna be, it's gonna pop. When you see it, it's gonna have water coming out, water coming up and lights and the, you know, it's gonna be beautiful. There's like Las Vegas style kind of beautiful.
And what's your plan for the maintenance of that? Do you do you live here locally? Are you?
Yeah, I'm gonna have a maintenance guy that's, we have the Desert Scape that was already approved through you guys about a year ago. So it's very low, actually no water.
Okay.
It's a rock boulder and some colored gravel, colored rock. It's very nice.
No, I I love the fact for the water feature. I just want to make sure that it's able to be maintained and consistently look good because that's the first and last thing you see is leave the city. So I wouldn't want something to
Correct.
fall below the weight.
No, we 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 have that sixty homes we're doing there. We own the commercial property as well, me and my brother. And we have two drive-throughs planned on that and a retail building, so we have a a lot invested in this. For the last twenty-five years, my family's owned the property, so we're not, we're not gonna just build something and walk away. We're here. We're gonna push it and and it's gonna be beautiful and you'll be happy. Put it that way. You'll be very, very satisfied.
I just want to say that I can't wait. I'm very excited about this. My personal.
Yes.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
Call for the vote?
To approve allowing.
Allowing, yes, the water feature, everything to go fully, and it will be running. Yeah.
Seconded it.
I did.
I think.
Yeah.
Or you did.
Everyone did. It was unanimously seconded.
With with not having to bring in the ten-inch water line at this time, so as long as I could get water in there to run it.
Right.
We're good.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, I got that.
I don't want my brother to call me up and go, dude, you cost me.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Do I choke you off? Yes.
Yes.
Have some water.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Only a little bit. There's a drought.
Appointment to fill a vacancy on the City Council Visitor Center Subcommittee. I know Jeff Williams was on that committee, but I'm the mayor now, and I would volunteer to serve on this committee. Staff.
The motion to have Jan, since she's the mayor and the mayor was on it before, fill this vacancy.
Do we need a same council member as well?
I would like, do I make another motion right now or other two people?
You can eat.
First of all, this this is a committee that existed before. It was Mayor Williams, Kirsten and
Tonnant.
Councilman, excuse me. And so obviously, the mayor, Mayor Williams has long appeared. So there are ongoing oversight responsibilities need to be done. So there's a motion and a second. If you want to submit an amendment to that motion, it'd be appropriate.
You can amend the motion. Well, you can amend the motion, and then we'll vote on whether to amend the motion or not.
I like to amend the motion.
So the way it works is, let's say, let's say hypothetically, you wanted to amend the motion by saying, also, I want so-and-so to be an alternative, a backup. Then we would vote on that motion first of whether to amend the original motion. Does that make sense? And then if it's agreed to amend the motion, then we mo then we vote on the amended motion. So it's a two-step process.
So you can.
Is that before the second?
She will need to make a motion. If you want to amend, then you make a motion. That will apply. Does that make the motion?
Well, I would like to make a motion to amend that by nominating Ellen on the board.
I second it.
Okay, so then we would call for the vote to amend the original motion.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the motion. You vote on the motion to amend first.
To amend.
So there there was a motion.
We're voting on what she said.
So let me let me explain it. There was an original motion. Then there was a motion to amend. There was a second on the motion to amend. So now you're gonna vote on whether to amend the motion. If the motion is amended, then you vote whether you want to approve it or not.
And that would that would be hers.
Yeah, it would be the amended motion.
Correct.
If the motion to amend fails, then if there's a second for the original motion, then we vote on that. That's how it works.
An original motion. It wasn't the second, only was your motion.
It wasn't a second.
So if there's no if there's no second for the original motion, then that motion would die and you'd move on.
So there's no second.
There's no second. So then really, it's just your motion now.
And she and she got and I got a second, so we go for a vote, right?
Call for the vote.
For Ellen.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
No.
Hoag?
No.
Bell?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, appointing Patrick J. Martinez as a city manager effective October second, twenty twenty-three through October first, twenty twenty-six, setting a base salary of a hundred ninety-seven thousand in compliance with SB fourteen thirty-six and incor and incorporate into the salary schedule for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself, so I'm gonna step out of the room.
Okay.
Because I am on the agenda.
Right.
You're not voting, so.
And members of the council in excuse me, on March fourteenth, I provided the city council with notice that my intent to retire effective in six months as required by my contract. Your council indicated that it wanted to satisfy with the general overall direction of the city and that you would look at in-house candidates first. And on March twenty-sixth, your council interviewed Patrick and directed the city manager to negotiate a possible employment. You reviewed that employment agreement. Now is the time to act on that agreement. It is a three-year term. It is at one hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars a year. It requires the the candidate or the new city manager to make full-time commitment to the position. He would be prohibited from having outside employment or consultancy. And, you know, that that's important. You could approve, like if he was advising another city manager in another city in another state. But it's clearly you need to protect that you're getting all that this person has to offer and that 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 he is not creating conflicts with others. This is an at-will employee, which means that there is no protection outside of, there's no civil service protection outside of this agreement, which means that termination can occur at any time by the council. So at-will means at-will. So if without cause, the city would be required, if you just decided that the council's going in a different direction, that you would be obligated to do a nine-month sentence. If for cause, and for cause is itemized in very very detail, malfeasance, criminal activity, ethical lapses, or failure to follow policy direction of the council, then that would be at cause and there's no sentence. The the city benefits would be the same as all other city employees get. There's also a provision that in recognition of after-hours work demands, that you will provide sixty hours of administrative leave a year on a use-it-or-lose-it basis, and that is just additional time on. So there is a week that happens where there is a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on Monday. On council, there's two, on Tuesday, there's a council meeting. Wednesday, there's a planning commission meeting. So it's to recognize that 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 person has to be at a lot of those meetings, and rather than keep track of the time in minutia, you're you're making a general statement that you're expected and you're expected to be at weekend and other evening events. And then the last provision, and again, that's a use or lose. And then the last provision is vacation rule. Patrick has is a five-year employee of the city. This recognizes that he would be treated as a fifteen-year employee, which means he would fifteen-year employee, which means he would get three weeks of vacation year rather than two. So those are the highlights. I started to write by choose Patrick and decided that's your call and I left that to you. So now, those are the basics, I'd be glad to answer any questions on the contract. I have Patrick's resume in uh, in the packet. Patrick's involved in a um, advanced institute uh, for economic development that he completed in twenty. He is also part of a um, local government summer institute at Stanford this year. Um, his credentials speak for themselves, so with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Those classes that he has, uh, that, that is online, correct? So he's not gonna be, he's not gonna be le- leaving us or going to his classes.
Stanford?
Yeah.
I, I believe so, but.
I hope so. I hope so.
It's a long way away.
I know. A long driving, then come back to work.
I move to approve.
Move second.
Any, any public comment?
Any public comment or?
Um, I agree, I think that uh, the city needs uh, someone young and someone energetic, very smart. Well, Rick's, Rick's leaving.
Thanks, thanks for us old people, we appreciate that.
As a replacement. So I think it's a good fit.
That's pretty messed up.
Well, I think it's a good fit, that Patrick's been here that long and, and uh, he's, he's learned a lot from Rick. Yeah. So I think it's a, it's a good fit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Anybody else?
If, after that, public comment is closed. Call for the vote.
Uh, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Hoag? Yes.
Belt?
Very much so, yes.
Yes.
And who was the second on that?
I don't think it was second.
Oh, just McCorkle.
Okay.
Okay.
Westy and Cookies.
Oh, gosh.
Why, why do I tell it didn't work?
City attorneys before.
Sorry, Patrick. Oh. There goes the first half of the year.
Yeah.
Welcome, Patrick.
Thank you.
Did you say city attorneys? Right, just briefly, some of the items that we've been working on are representing the city in the state court action adverse River Valley receivership action, but also defending the city in a federal lawsuit that was filed by the uh owner of River Valley. And then in addition to that, we, and I believe I reported on this at my last, at the last meeting, but um, just as a reminder, we also recently finished up representing the city in the Rio Buena Vista litigation. And as you're all aware, the city prevailed at trial, uh, the plaintiffs appealed. Um, and then ultimately agreed to dismiss their appeal, so the matter is now concluded. Um, we also have been representing the city on a number of ongoing code enforcement matters and receivership matters. Um, we are also enforcing the city's cannabis ordinance uh, and also its voter-approved tax. And we're spending a fair amount of time on that at the moment. Uh, in addition, assisting the city's staff with Public Records Act requests, uh, usually the city clerk handles them, but sometimes we become involved when there's uh issues that she needs our assistance with, or if it's somebody that we've been in litigation with, sometimes people will go around discovery under the Discovery Act by submitting pu- Public Records Act requests, and so we usually are involved in those. Uh, also assisting the city with legal issues related to the meter installations as, as those issues arise. And assisting the city with public contracting issues and real estate matters. Also labor and employment matters and um, land use matters. Uh, providing the city with Brown Act advice on a pretty regular basis, Brown Act advice or conflict of interest questions that come up, we provide advice on those. And then uh, we responded to an audit letter that we received from your auditor. Um, and that basically just gives them an update on all the litigation as of the close of the fiscal year. And the reason they're interested in that is they wanna know whether the city has any significant liability exposure when they're conducting the audit. And then also worked on the uh, income sitting, incoming city manager contract that you just approved. And uh, worked with Rick Daniels on that. And then assisted uh, with the city clerk annual evaluation process that was conducted at the last meeting. And then we are providing um, assistance to staff in connection with the housing authority. And uh, and then also assisted staff and reviewed the items that were contained in, in items nine, ten, and eleven on the agenda tonight. And that's my report.
Thank you. City manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, first of all, um, the City of Needles City Council is being recognized by the American Planning Association or the General Plan, the Housing and Transportation Land Use Elements. American Planning Association is a professional association dealing with um, land use matters and they uh, found uh, our general plan to be the best that they reviewed. Also, coming up soon is JJ DeLeon is organizing a junior golf clinic. So if there are any youth, uh, oh, really all ages, uh, as long as you don't have a beard, is uh,
They start young.
Boys, girls, they provide, JJ provides the clubs. So there's no, there's no, um, i- it's not an expensive venture. Uh, and it's to teach uh, youth the game of golf, but the etiquette.
That's right.
Tier was involved in a, uh, Mr. McAllister testified that they were gonna do uh, high-speed internet. And they were gonna use a new technique called micro trench. When they started, uh, the micro trench, they weren't using, they were doing horizontal boring instead, and after about the fourth or fifth sewer line that they cut into, um, we stopped. So they are only doing areas that they can hang wires. So uh that was, that was. Um, the mayor and I are gonna be meeting with Supervisor Rao and the rest of the Board of Supervisors. They are going, they wanna meet with all the cities about uh, programs to deal with those that are homeless. And uh, the state shared revenues that are coming down the road and have those to be uh, addressed by the River Valley Inn, as I mentioned. Uh, we had a walkthrough on that property with the core-appointed receiver. And uh, that's uh, the first thing we did is made sure it was secured. Uh, because we didn't want anybody in there. Uh, BNSF Road, we received a citizen complaint that BNSF Road, which is a, a road kind of, that parallels the railroad tracks from the underpass to the old Acra crossing. And um it, the neighbor complained about the excessive dust. And I drove that road and experienced it myself. So I'm working with Public Works Department and our Capital Projects Group to go out there and lay down six to nine inches of asphalt grindings on top of the ones we already put in. And then we will put on top of that a slurry seal which will coagulate, if that's the right word, if somebody will tell me that's not, but
It is.
Uh, but, but we need an adhesive to hold that in place, there's a lot, all the BNSF trucks come out, come across that road. So we want something that hold up, and I remember something that, that uh, Johnny Phillips told me eight years ago when we did the first treatment to that, to that street, was if you put down the road base, six to nine inches, and then you put the slurry seal on top like two or three years in a row, you've got darn near a paved road.
Right.
Or you at least have a solid enough road base that if you wanna put down two to four inches of asphalt, you've got streak. So we're just building a road on a slower timeline, but uh, we're moving forward on that. Um, the underpass, now, don't laugh because I've reported this before and it hasn't occurred. But we did the final walkthrough with the construction, our contractor, that we issued the award in twenty-nineteen to build the barrier. And then we spent the rest of time dealing with BNSF and them and their bureaucracy, so the contractor uh, reports that by the second week in May, he will be under construction on the barrier to keep people from running into the bridge. It's gonna have, I'm putting blinking Christmas lights on top. Anything to get people's attention that, that don't run into this.
Are they, are they, I'd like to fry it too?
I've got snipers, but they won't let me do that. Uh, this week is a chamber breakfast. Uh, but also I think on Thursday, uh, representatives from State Senator Padilla's office and Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia's office will be here. Uh, they, they have an open forum uh, early in the morning, or nine o'clock. And then in the afternoon, they're available to meet with any individual who has a, an issue with a state agency. I, I would say social security, but that's bad, but uh, but th- they're available to meet with people and they wanna have regular office hours here in the future. And we need to organize an event where we get the principals here, not just their staff.
Right.
Um, the automatic uh, water meeting, water metering project, it has officially started. I handed out the flyers that we put on people's doors the day before, we're gonna do the, the water meter replacement because it leads to a momentary ten, fifteen-minute outage, so we just wanna make sure people are informed.
Or in the shower.
Yeah, if you're in the shower. So it uh, it identifies, uh, call rainy dunes if you have a problem. She wanted that to be me, I suggested it's gonna be me, it's gonna be Patrick.
It's down, doesn't it?
But rainy stood up. So far, uh, we're pleased with the, uh, the electric meters are almost all done. But now we're going to the, to the water meters. Uh, well, fifteen, the construction that you approved tonight will be underway May and, May first, second. Uh, we had a, a delay in getting pipe for that casing. Uh, the Duke Watkins Playground Equipment is all installed. So as you recall, we had about a hundred twenty-five thousand of a legacy foundation uh, a grant, and then we, the, the Duke Watkins grant that we got, the four million dollar grant, we added more pieces of play equipment. And it's actually kinda fun. So I'd encourage you, uh, whether you're gonna sit on the merry-go-round or not, it's uh, it's nice and it's being tested. Uh, but we've rented it out exclusively for a nine-year-old birthday party. Uh, the shade structures at the softball field in Duke's Park have been completed. Unfortunately, there's no bleachers there. Uh, because we had moved them, and then when they got were to be moved back, they got pirated over to the softball field at Nikki Bunch. So we have beautiful shade structures, but we will find a way to get those uh, back. The Nikki Bunch shade structure, uh, that the school district is funding, uh, started construction uh, today. Um, we're sticking with the basic blue canopy that we used at the playground, so it's being replicated at uh, both Nikki Bunch and uh, and Three Peaks. And then I also handed out the hour cycles.
Yep.
They have put together a program where uh, they will give you a free propane tank.
Correct.
And it, and it's reusable refill. So the idea is to not to, to cut down the waste volumes. So uh, I have information available on that. I think this or some version of it may be going out in utility bills. And it's to encourage people to reuse uh, those propane, propane containers. And with that, Madam Mayor, be glad to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I don't have to put it in my time. Um, so this road that we're talking about uh, doing something with, cuz the dust, um, is BNSF able to pay for some of that? I ask because of, a lot of it's their trucks, um, it's along their road. Um, but I also know that BNSF is doing a lot of work in, I believe, the Barstow area, San Bernardino area. Um, they're they're contributing to their communities there, here. Trying to be political or non, I don't know, but nice about it. But they don't even upgrade their building, you know what I mean? So they aren't contributing to the community that they're in here, but they're contributing to all the other communities that they're in. So I'm not sure if there's a way for them to pay for even half of this expense, that maybe they should at least do that.
Well, uh, and I'll provide you with a report in time, but in about two thousand and five, the city approved them closing the Acra crossing at what, HRI Street somewhere, uh, I forget, but to the, to the west end of El Garsas. It used to be an Acra crossing. They closed it, the, the BNSF then had an obligation to build a new road coming off of River Street, which comes down Paul Parks, and then connect out to Spruce on K Street. Uh, we are dusting off that agreement. Um, because maybe this will be an interim. But in the interim, I'm talking to a fellow by the name of Jesse Bauer with uh, BNSF in San Bernardino because I need permission to put these grinding stand.
Okay.
Uh, and uh, at that time, I'm gonna ask for financial disbursement or in-kind. You know, they can uh rent a grade. They can do compaction. Uh, they can help in that because uh, you're right in the sense that when I looked at the videos that the neighbor provided, it's mostly BNSF vehicles coming out. Now, it's only fair that they disperse that some financial man. So uh, I take your comments and will do my best.
I, I have to add to that. Um, I just went to Cal Cities to the uh, the Desert Mountain Division meeting, and one of the things that was discussed there is the one point five billion-dollar facility that Santa Fe, that BNSF is putting in Barstow. One point five billion dollars, creating more than twenty thousand jobs in Barstow. So if that's what they're doing in Barstow, this is their road. It is causing us a lot of grief. There's a lot of dust, a lot of stuff that has to be breathed down there for everyone. And it's, and, and we looked at, I mean, this woman sent us videos, there were one hundred and thirty cars in one day that came down that road, and most of them are BNSF trucks. And the cloud of dust that comes off that street across K Street into her camera, where you can't even see, she can't even open her front door, and it's not just her, she's the only one complaining, there's other homes there. So I, I really think, and if she told me she spoke to someone from Santa Fe, and I told her, well, we were going to pave this street if the city would keep it up, I went, oh, they're gonna pave it, maybe the city will pick it up. But I said, I cannot speak to that. I cannot speak to that, I cannot make any promises, but if they're willing to pave it, then we could keep it up. I mean, that would be a suggestion for us and it would be, it would solve all the problems for that problem there. So um, anyway, I just wanted to say that because that was, that was shocking, cuz I didn't really know what standard that project in Barstow and how much they're putting in there, when, when we have a big Santa Fe presence here. And I'm not, and I love Santa Fe. When, when we have a big Santa Fe presence here and I'm not, and I love Santa Fe, I love the employees. I guess I'm not trying to diss them, but it is about, you know, politics and money and different things. And, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease or the dusty street gets the pavement.
So we probably, no, this item's not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just want to remind everybody it's not on the agenda. So we probably, you know, it's a city manager report and he's just reporting to you.
Thank you.
All right.
That's the question. So this is, I wanted, this is the, what I wanted to say. We went to, Jamie and I went to Sacramento and we had a really, we had a really incredible time. We participated in the leadership summit and the things that we, the, the seminars that we went to covered the pathway to preventing homelessness and reducing it, critical communication skills, preventing organized retail crime, which was incredibly unbelievable to see the warehouses of things that are stolen and then sold like on Facebook Marketplace. I mean, these people literally have warehouses that you could drive five semi trucks into with stolen property. So the, the law enforcement has its hands full with that one. The best practices in dealing with illegal dumping, which I found really fascinating. And the people who put on that seminar have come out here and participated in helping us with our problems with illegal dumping in our community here. The Surplus Land Act, Housing and Land Use Impacts, Safe Schools, and the closing speaker was phenomenal. We did have the opportunity, we were so lucky. We called and we were able to get in to see Assembly, Assemblyman Eduardo Garcia and to Senator Stephen Padilla. And what I found fascinating was not only the fact that they wanted to listen to us because we were not up there lobbying, although we were with Cal Cities, they were more lobbying for one particular issue, which isn't really a problem we have so much right now. But we talked to them about our grocery store and housing and, and the problems with getting contractors to come into the state of California. And, you know, trying to find out if there's any kind of Plan B or anything can be bent or changed or for not just our community, but there's other communities on borders that have, might have the same problems, but this is what we're dealing with. And calling attention again to our inability to provide fresh vegetables, fresh produce or fresh meat to our community. And that these are important issues for our city and this is what we need from you. And so they were very, very nice about all of that. And, and it was, that was a very fulfilling and an interesting, interesting experience because I, I've never done anything like that. And we also met another senator at the dinner, we had the greatest, greatest reception. I took pictures of it. I think I'm going to have a party and do it just like that. It was, it was great. So I want to thank you for sending us to this event because we learned a lot. We were busy the whole time, we were dead at the end of the day. We, we were hopping all day long. It was a lot of information, a lot of people, we had no voices at the end of the day. And, and that's it. So I want to thank you very much for sending us.
Thank you. Councilmember McCorkle?
Just gonna, she covered a lot of it. With us being in Sacramento, it was a great opportunity. We were literally up from six to about eleven thirty, twelve at night. A lot of our conversations were with our neighboring cities, Barstow, Hisperia, Victorville's, you know, the, all the high desert cities are who we try to attach to. They, with our division, a lot of them didn't realize some of the problems that we were having, especially with the grocery store, getting contractors and stuff. So they were very friendly. They gave us a lot of ideas. We have some brainstorming meetings that we're trying to schedule with them on bringing in contractors and stuff like that too with our mountain division with the Cal States. We did get to sneak in and actually talk to Assemblymen and the Senator. What I found was that the Assemblyman was, he, Garcia was actually trying to brainstorm with us right there while we're in there. And he already knew about some of our challenges with the grocery store and the food situation. So he wasn't really familiar with being a food desert. So he was going to look into that and come back with some more ideas or ways to get food here. One of our suggestions to him was instead of maybe not giving us so much grant money, but figuring out how to subsidize a grocer to come in, whatever it would cost them to fix up the building above and beyond what they were asked for. Extra cost in insurance coming across state lines, but to help subsidize that for the grocer. And now that they're coming down, Assemblyman Garcia did say that he was planning a trip within the next couple of weeks to come down here. So that will be very interesting. We did talk to a lady at one of the receptions, she's with Jamboree Housing. So she has a very lengthy resume in working with housing authorities, bringing in affordable housing. I want to say she's completed almost ten thousand units. So we've invited her down here to tour city and see what kind of help or guidance that she could give on the housing authority aspect of it, affordable housing, some of the things that she's done in her smaller cities that she's worked with. So she was definitely very good contact to have, especially with all of her knowledge and the fact that her father-in-law is a senator, not ours, but a different one. And her nephew is actually Mojave County Sheriff, who is coming to join our sheriff's department. Small world. So I told him I would take him on a trip around town and try to sell them a, get them a family home here. Let's see, now I just want to move on. Just want to let everyone know that I know that when Rick was hired way back in the past, everyone kind of gasped at the, at the amount of money, which how remote. It has been looked at, what other places with the averages for a city manager. I saw a couple of faces kind of gasp when they saw the amount. And it's really not off at all, size, the town, our size, a resume. So this is something that we definitely considered a lot into. We looked into it, we sat, we all pulled up what the averages were for city managers. And with Patrick already having the working experience here in town, raising a family here, we figured this was a perfect choice for us. And he's very well invested and he has his heart into the job. So we were definitely pleased to be able to make a yes vote on this. And that's all. Oh, and I also want to thank Rainey because I don't think Rainey gets thanked enough, but you're a goddess. That's all I got.
Yes, Rainey. Vice Mayor Merritt.
I was, thank you ladies for going and representing us. That's awesome. She was telling me before the meeting a little bit about what you guys talked about and that's amazing. Really excited about all that. So thank you. And also Patrick, he, when I was talking to her about it and representing in different places, Patrick is, we're so lucky to have him and he's going to do a great job. And seeing him like when he's out and about at ICSC and different things, it's just incredible how he advocates for our community and how hard he works. And we're just lucky to have him. So thank you for taking us on and thank you also Rainey because you do a lot. And oh my goodness, thank you. And we're going to miss you, Rick, but I know you won't be gone, you won't be far, so.
You'll be right down there.
That's all.
Oh, Councilmember Poe.
Okay, well, I'll get on the bandwagon, congratulations, Patrick. I can say welcome aboard, but you're all pretty aboard. So I have one item that I'd like to talk about. I understand Needles is down to one physician. And this is going to be presenting a hardship on, on medical patients, especially Medicare, Medi-Cal is what I'm saying, because they don't have the ability to go across the river to get medical care. And so I'm just kind of throwing out for suggestions on how we can attract additional medical personnel. Can we work with, I don't know, the Health and Home Human Services or the State Department to get some grants in here to get? I know it's a problem nationwide, small towns have a medical drought. And, but we, we need some more, some more physicians in here and some medical care, especially with Tri-State moving down, downtown now into the bigger building. And it just kind of seems ludicrous, but I think that's something that we need to put on our radar and try to attract some, some more physicians, whether they be specialists. I presume that the emergency hospital physicians are still there, but this is a general, the GP, we need to get more medical care in here. So that's, that's my soapbox.
Thank you. Councilmember Belt.
It's been on the agenda for many years, trying to get more providers in town. The never-ending everywhere. Patrick, also, I want to say thank you for all the hard work you put in. We appreciate having you and welcome, welcome aboard on another sense, but you got, you got some work ahead of you, lots of things we're trying to fix here, get better. So on that note, I'd like to get a goal city setting, we keep talking about it, but we haven't set a date. So we really need to set our date for that. I want to thank everybody for that rec center. It's finally going to get another some sound walls. If you have ever sat in a basketball game, if you haven't, by all means, please come and join. You will be deaf by the end of it. I'm really excited to get our pool going, hopefully you will have that finished here shortly. I know that's one that's we've been working on. Also to get our visitor center, let's start, get a meeting set up then. And so we can get discussing this right off the bat. Want to become a California Welcome Center, I'm never going to let that go while I'm on council. So let's get that moving. And that's all I got for night.
Thank you. Councilmember Longbury.
We were represented well in Sacramento, thank you too. Thank you too for the report too, that, that's, that's awesome. That's awesome, what, what, what you did there for, for us. And Patrick, welcome aboard. I know you're already here, but you're just moving up a little bit. And Rainey, you're doing a great job. And Wayne over there at the Chamber of Commerce, thank you for what all you do over there too. That's appreciated. And there's a couple of, a couple of things that I have that I talked to people in the town. And Aliso and Monterey, that area there at the end of Aliso, there, there is a, an underground tunnel that goes to the other side of the freeway, that's on the east side. And it's been, there's been a lot of homeless in there that have been living in there and a lot of graffiti on the face of it. I'm not complaining about their graffiti because it's hidden. But there's no trespassing signs already there all over in that area. And there, there's a elderly lady that's single, lives alone, that's at the very end and she has people coming by your house all the time and she's afraid at night. And I just wanted to address that, that for, for her. And another one was Coronado and Aaron, there was an incident, a sheriff incident there about two days ago. There was four officers and there was a, I, I believe they pulled over a lady, I wasn't there, this is, this is commented to me. They pulled over a lady there that was obviously in need of some kind of help. She either had a mental condition or a drug, drug problem. And they didn't do anything, from what I was told, they didn't do anything, they just drove off and let her, let her walk from there. I don't know what the incident was, but I believe that the lack of any kind of help here in town on a twenty-four hour basis could, could contribute to to that, to not, not being able to, to help people that are out there in need. The closest place they take them to is what, San Bernardino? That you have to take if there's a, there's a mental health issue or, you know, and that's, that's a long way for them to drive, that's, that's a whole day's pay, pay for an officer. I think there should be something a little bit more local here that we could put somebody in. If they have to do a seventy-two hour hold, they can't do it here. So if we could look into that, the hospital situation and the doctor's situation, I, I, I used to go to Orange County for my doctors, I have to go there and I shouldn't have to travel two hundred and sixty miles to go to a doctor. That, that is in desperate need and what can we do? You know, that's, you know, like, like everybody was saying, you know, what, what are we going to be able to do? You know, hopefully we could attract, attract something here a little bit, a little bit more to, to help our elderly people like me, not you, Rick, but, but like me. We, we got a younger, new manager coming in. That's all I got, thanks.
Your Honor, I wanted to tell you, I want to, I forgot to say that one of the things that I found striking in Sacramento was when people saw our badge saying that we are from Needles, I cannot even count how many times someone asks, oh my gosh, how's Rick? How's Patrick? He told us things about Rick and Patrick. But, but it was really nice because they knew, they, they did know about us and our city and the hard work. And for them to have their names out there like that, just as a testament to how much work they've done out there in, in the, in the world for our city, that they are, people are asking us specific questions about ourselves and different things. So I thought that was, I just wanted to throw that out there to both of them. Thank you.
Yeah, my turn. Congratulations, Patrick. Really excited to start working with you and make, definitely make Needles the destination for everybody to come to. And you too, Rainey, for all your extra.
Rainey, I spoke with Governor Newsom's representative, she lives in Riverside. And we talked about, you know, what's going on, all the positive things here in Needles. She was very interested in our wells. I, I mean, I gave her like a real elementary kind of what we're going on. So she, she is planning on a trip, she does have family in Mojave Valley. So when she does, I told her that we would take her around and show her that. And we have prom, which we're really glad to have the high school back after three year not showing up. And at the El Garcis on Saturday, it was very, very successful, they really enjoyed it. Thanks, everybody, and thank you to Ellen and Jamie for going to Sacramento.
Meeting adjourned.